Only meeting to order. Uh, need for an executive session?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, I've got, uh, three, uh, matters. Two are legal slash zoning related for executive session discussions. And the third item is a contractual discussion, uh, involving the Pittsburgh First Response Building.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion, we go to executive session for those three items.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Uh, do we need to amend the agenda?
I just want to point out that after you got your packets, um, I did add two matters, um, to the agenda. So they're in your revised agenda. Uh, that includes first, an update on the business personal property tax assessment under old business. And under new business, review a letter from Rutland Town regarding emergency dispatch services. There's actually a couple other liquor board matters to add as well. Dollar General has submitted their first, um, second-class liquor license application. And we have minutes from the April sixth meeting to approve.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agendas, re-approve, redone.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Uh, select board minutes of April sixth. Everybody get a chance to look those over.
Here they are, Joe.
Did you show Brenda how to line up the papers for us?
I did.
Now that after fourteen years, you finally learned how to do it.
I discovered late in the game that they don't want to flip through documents to sign them. They want the signature pages upfront.
And then you put that in the back after.
Thank you.
Uh, orders, any questions on the orders?
There's two original ones and two tonight.
Well, I had the water meter, Police Academy, twenty-one hundred fifty-six bucks, uh, what might that be?
They've done some expansion work at the Police Academy and this is a new meter to accommodate their new plumbing. And they have paid for it.
Yeah.
They've paid for the installation and the, and the meter.
Kind of a switch over to some.
That's right, that's right.
Yep.
Plus we get to collect more money from them.
Yes. Any other questions on either set?
I do, uh, Ferguson Water Works, uh, Whipple Hollow, Creed Hill and Humphrey Roads, Culverts. Are those part of, uh, a grant that will get paid back or are these just for stock?
Um, I think these are just for stock. We have application in, uh, for the replacement of two Whipple Hollow Culverts, but those are not on this list.
Okay.
They're larger ones.
And then, uh, I have the service invoice here from our fourteen thousand dollar bill for, uh, revamping our grader. Uh, the majority of it, almost, uh, ten thousand of it was labor, um, you know.
The, the, the view.
Three thousand worth of parts, so it, it was mainly just going through and getting it back up this now.
Chad explained it to me and to Pat as kind of a way to kind of get a, a top to bottom overhaul and review of all the systems to try to extend the life of our used, of our grader, um, because purchasing a new one is so daunting. So we're trying to extend the life of the one we've got.
It wasn't too long ago, we spent some pretty serious money, was it the transmission or something that we overhauled?
I think.
That machine ought to be pretty darn good shape, you know?
I'm hoping.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't get used all that much, you know, but it does get used.
You still need it.
You need it when you need it.
Town managers report.
Uh, let me get you those orders, all four of them, Joe.
Yeah.
Sorry, and, uh, payroll two, and while you're doing that, I'll let you know what the town manager report is. Uh, okay. The deadline for applications for the position of assistant to the town manager, which is the position now held by Linda Drummond, was Friday, the fifteenth, and we're pleased to have received eight applications. Interviews will begin Monday of next week and those will be conducted by the new town manager, Brenda Fox Howard, and Linda working together. The extended deadline for applications for the new position of assessor clerk is Friday, April twenty-ninth. And I believe I've got four or five applications and still a couple more weeks and we'll, um, we'll talk. And/or Brenda will talk to you about next steps of interviewing. Um, Omea will be convening one of their, uh, community issues team meetings on Wednesday of next week, at which time Pittsburgh's new town manager will be introduced to the group. And she'll also be given the honor of a tour at Omea, and so that's exciting. I told her to expect a fun tour. Uh, if any of you wish to pass along, for us to pass along any information, question or concerns to our friends at Omea, please let us know. Uh, there will be a staff meeting tomorrow, April twenty-first at nine, as always, selectmen are invited to attend. Again, that'll be an opportunity for staff who haven't yet met Brenda to do so. Um, our emergency management director, Jason Davis, has expressed the desire to, um, resign his post, but he has agreed to stay on, uh, for the time being while we advertise the position. So if anyone wishes to become Pittsburgh's next emergency management director, please contact the town manager and the town manager can tell you more about what that entails. Uh, similarly, we're looking for a member to serve on the Otter Creek Watershed Insect Control District, also known as the mosquito district. Each of the member towns has two members and an alternate. Mike Blaisdell was our second, um, full member, but he's just told us he'd like to step down from that position and serve instead as its, as our alternate. So it means we're looking for a full member of the mosquito district board. If anybody has interest, again, please let the town manager know so we can have a full accompaniment of, uh, representation. Um, there's also an alternate needed for the Otter Creek Communication Union District. As you may know, there's an effort with some federal and state money and maybe some local money to be added at some point to bring fiber and high-speed internet to basically every structure in the region. A lot of our parts of our town are underserved or not served at all. And, um, this is an effort, uh, like many regions of the state to bring high-speed internet. Um, a reminder about safety in the railroad right-of-way. As you may have heard on news reports, there have been some near misses in Brandon, I believe, and elsewhere, um, because the state has begun testing its high-speed rail between, um, Rutland and Burlington. And sometimes people will be walking their dogs along the train tracks and the train will be on them before they have much of a chance to respond. So please be safe, stay away from the railroad tracks, even if you in the past have enjoyed walking along them or near them. Um, the state has resumed issuing weekly progress reports on the Route seven, Segment one reconstruction project. That's south of the mobile station. I know it looks pretty much done, but there's a few, uh, punch list items and some seeding and mulching and driveway work that they'll be doing into June of this year. Uh, finally, this will be my last, uh, meeting at, as the town's, uh, town manager. I've greatly enjoyed, um, living here in Pittsburgh and serving as the town manager for fourteen years. I'd like to thank the excellent staff and dedicated, um, and supportive, um, select board for all of their support during this time. Like to thank the good people of Pittsburgh for their kindness and warm welcome to me. So good luck to all of you and the best of, best of luck and best wishes to each of you. Thank you for all you've done for me.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Will be missed.
Thanks.
Not a lot.
I'll take it, I'll take it. Thanks a lot.
My line. A couple of questions, how many applicants did you say you had for Linda's job?
Eight.
Eight, that's what I thought you said, wow.
Four interviews lined up for Monday.
Okay. Uh, yeah, and the railroad track thing, I guess most people figure they're gonna hear a train coming, but the fact that this thing is going so fast, the sound is behind it.
Yes.
So that's, yeah. Well, yeah, that too.
Plus the new rails, they're quiet.
They're quiet, yeah, you don't have as much ta-tunk, 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 so yeah. So, yeah, so people do need to watch out, yeah.
It's illegal to walk on the tracks to begin with.
Well, it is, it is. Okay, uh, any select board member remarks tonight? Okay, public comments. Okay. Uh, old business, uh, I guess you two guys are here, so I will skip to the update on the business personal property tax assessment.
Just a broad overview, Mr. Chairman, if I could, um, this is an opportunity for our assessor and our town contractor, Gail Gantic, to talk to us about how the business, um, personal property in-person tax assessment is going. We've had some feedback from people who were surprised about the process or didn't know the full story about why we've decided to do it this way this year. And so maybe you can give us a little bit of an overview, Lisa, and Gail can tell us how it's going so far.
Well, I think I'd like to start with kind of an explanation of why we're doing this and how this works on the grand list. So Pittsburgh is my only town that I work in that does business personal property. Um, the other towns in Rutland County that I'm aware of that do it are Rutland Town and Rutland City. Um, I think those are the only ones, Wells used to do it, but I'm not sure why, 'cause they don't have a lot that would be on that list. So the towns that do it tend to have large industrial or commercial properties, so that's a significant boost to their grand list. So the way business personal property works is it's on the books with the statute that towns can do it. Many towns have voted it out. Pittsburgh has remained doing business personal property equipment over the years. And when you do that, it, the advantage, there are two advantages to that. One is that goes on your municipal grand list, and I have a copy of the first page of the four-eleven. If that would be helpful to copy that and distribute that.
Fifteen pages listing all of the business.
Oh, well, this is just the four-eleven.
Okay.
If I can make a few copies of that. So two advantages to that. One is that it goes on the municipal grand list. So if you don't understand how that works, we have, um, we have two sides to the grand list. Two sides to the four-eleven, two sides to your tax bill. The left-hand side is the municipal side and the right-hand side is the education tax side. So the education tax side, I'm not even gonna try to explain how that tax rate is calculated. That has become ridiculously complicated. I did have my head around it at one point, they added one more formula into it and I lost it at that point. Um, but the municipal is still very simple. You have this, and this is the way my dad always explained it for many, many years, and it still works that way almost entirely with the, um, with the municipal tax rate. And I think that's enough for most people, if you share a little bit, send it around. Um, so you have this total list of, uh, your property in town, your municipal grand list. You have this total list of expenses needed to run the town. And you divide one number into the other and that's your tax rate. It's as simple as that. So if this process comes about and the amount of our personal property grand list increases or decreases, that's gonna change the tax rate accordingly. So it's not that the town is gathering more money, more money from our taxpayers, as, as some people have suggested in a little bit of this brouhaha. It's not that, it's that it is distributed equally, so that we're all paying based on our share of that grand list. Same thing with a town-wide real estate reappraisal. So the other, one other advantage to, um, doing the personal property is Comcast has, the way it's set up with the legislature, they are required to file an inventory. And that goes on the education grand list, but it doesn't go on the municipal grand list unless you do personal property. So we're the town of Pittsburgh, to vote out personal property, you would not only lose thirty-three eight, thirty-three point eight million off of the grand list for equipment, you'd also lose almost a million from Comcast. And both of those numbers, as we know, are being reviewed by Gail. So the whole point of bringing Gail in was because, as I've explained, I'm a real estate appraiser, I'm not a personal property appraiser. It's a specific field of appraisal. Um, and we, if we're gonna do it, my argument was we want it to be fair. And I know some people are honest, honest Joes who are reporting, you know, exactly what they have and maybe even under-reporting the depreciation they're allowed to report. Others are, are doing the opposite. And then some in town have been ignorant of the law completely, so they haven't been paying yet at all over the years. And one of those individuals is quite upset about this. And anyway, I'll, I'll, I'll turn the floor over to Gail to talk about how that's going and, and how she's approaching folks to, to try to pick those up. I mean, it's, again, it's, it's only equitable that everybody who is obligated to pay that, that we're asking them to do that.
Thank you for having me, I appreciate this. So I start with the, um, there's a letter that went out to everyone that we knew we had on the list. And what I asked for were copies of that letter. Because I'm obviously stopping in and seeing people that are not aware of this, so I'm the messenger, right? So obviously I give them a copy of the letter, let them have a chance to read it, um, answer as many questions as it takes to kind of help them through the process, explain what we're doing, how we're doing it. I've also mentioned to them that if they give me permission to go through, they are going to get a copy of what I'm doing first before it goes to the town. So they're going to have a chance to see what I valued everything at if they don't have figures to give me. And that happens in a town like this, where you have people who have been here for ten years, twenty years, thirty years. They don't have the cost on a lot of the stuff I'm looking at. So that's what I'm here for, to give them an opinion of value, to consider. And then they get to see the depreciation we're applying and they actually get to see the bottom line. And then if I have some idea of what the mill rate is, I'm gonna put that in the letter for an assessment notice, so people can actually calculate that and see what that impact potentially could be. And so I just want to tell you all, I started here last week, was my first week, and everyone was very cooperative, very nice to me, never got thrown out. I mean, everyone has been, you know, once they understand why I'm doing it and that everyone is, you know, I'm going to visit everyone possible that I know about, obviously. Um, everyone has been very kind to me. Um, this, the stuff that maybe have happened, I don't know anything about it.
Question for you, um, are you forced to make certain estimates or, or, or guesses about value if someone does not allow you into their property? How does that work?
Yes, so the job that I have, that I understand is based on similar properties. Just say somebody just says, no, I'd rather you not come in, I prefer not to. Then I explain that to them, I tell them, just so you know, my job still is to come up with a value, an estimate of value for you, regardless of if you let me in or not. I give them that choice. And so I will do that based on the similar properties that I've visited. You have to remember, I've been in this about forty years. So, um, you know, I've seen, oh, you, after a while, you meet so many different people, you're doing a lot of the same businesses over and over again. You get an idea of what people are investing or where they go to buy this equipment. You know, you get, you get a sense of where they are. And that's my job, to come up with something that's fair, not just, you know, pick a number and not give them a backup of where I got that number. That's my job, and that's who you've hired.
And for people who are completely flat-footed and surprised to see you on the doorstep, it means they didn't get a letter, which means they've never participated and paid personal property taxes in the past.
That's correct.
So they should kind of cooperate of a thing.
Well.
Well, there's, as I explained to one individual who was concerned about that, I said, there's no, no going back in time for the town. Um, so we can't get that back, you know, going, going back in time, but moving forward, we're obligated to do that. And if someone doesn't let us in or if we just can't in any way make contact with them and we make an estimate, they'll still have the opportunity to grieve it. They're still gonna get a change of assessment notice, everybody, everyone will get a change of assessment notice and will have, you know, that opportunity to grieve it, so.
So I guess, couple of things that I've heard, uh, I've talked, been to, I went to three businesses. One you haven't been at, uh, two, I had heard there were issues. One, you know, the person really didn't have a problem other than, and I tried to explain it to him, he still didn't fully understand what it was you were looking for. So, and the other one, uh, well, they claim that you told them that if they do, they didn't let you in, you would go outside and let your imagination run wild. Which, uh, well, well, no, that's what I was told, which.
All right.
I, and I hope you didn't say that, 'cause I find that inappropriate. It's almost a threat and so, uh, even if you meant it as a joke.
Okay.
Again, so I guess what I, all I'm saying is maybe somehow a little more user friendliness, 'cause I mean, you are going into somebody's business.
Oh, yes.
If they're busy, you know, and you can say, you know, and they say, you know, we don't have time now, then maybe make an appointment with them.
Oh, absolutely, I have.
Okay, well, yeah, again, I'm just telling you what I've heard.
Can I just comment, some of what you've heard is absolutely fabricated, because we had a claim that she went into someone's backyard, she hasn't even, hadn't even been on that street. So that wasn't even her.
Okay, I hadn't heard that one.
So sometimes these things take a life of their own on Facebook and a lot of yarns gets spun that are way far from the truth.
Well, that's why I went to the two businesses that I had heard there were issues and, and talked to them directly. And, and again, one is, you know, I think he understands it a little better since I, not that I'm a hundred percent on it, but I basically understand it, I think he understands it a little better, but he was still confused. And like I say, the other one, they, you know, there was no issue anymore, but it was, you know, and you certainly don't look like somebody who would come off as.
No.
No.
But they, you know, so again, uh, be aware that, you know.
No, I appreciate the feedback, actually.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just.
No, I really do, and I don't think it's personal, I mean, you know, like I had a couple of people that say, well, why didn't I get the letter first? Or why didn't you call first? And I said, you know, I wanted you to meet me, I wanted you to know who it is. I wanted you to have a face, so that if you had questions, you could address them right now here. So, once I've said that, most of the time it's diffused or they're upset and it goes away. They say, yeah, and, you know, that is good. They're okay with that, actually appreciate the fact that I'm taking the time to stop and introduce myself and give them a chance to say yes or no.
Yeah, well, and I've had other, a couple of other people call me and ask about it. And once I explain it and they understand, then, you know, yeah, we're good whenever she shows up, you know. And one of them's like, well, how is she gonna contact me? I haven't ever been on it, and I was like, well, I'm sure she'll find you.
So when you get those, Dave, it would be really helpful, if anybody in town does, please send them, send them to my office and we'll, we'll send them out that letter.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Speaking of outreach, um, what is your timetable? Because we do have a notice in this newsletter reminding the broader community that this is happening. You, I know we did a targeted mailing to the ones we knew owed the tax, but since we have found that there's a lot of people who are not aware of it, the newsletter piece might help. What's your timetable for the rest of your work, do you think?
The statutory deadline on the, the form that, that taxpayers are required to fill out is April twentieth, which is, so.
Yeah.
We're running out of time on that, but certainly our deadline is, well, Gail's attempting to get her work done well before my June fourth deadline to lodge the preliminary grand list.
I got you, I got you.
Um, so we'll work with people, obviously, if they're just getting notice of it, they can't get it to us yesterday, so we can, we can grant an extension on that certainly.
The newsletter will be out next week, the end of next week.
The end of next week.
Yeah. Just wanted to get the printers.
Okay, excellent.
That will be online.
Good, okay, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
I mean, I think it's people, you know, they just, it all blew up on Facebook and a lot of people took it somewhere it shouldn't have gone, even though the person that put it on was told almost immediately they were out of line, they still let it go. And so, uh, well, no, 'cause I was called soon after to say what was going on by the person who had called them, so, yeah.
I was called and Gail was called. Multiple conversations and then the Facebook was after those conversations, so there are some things we can't fix, Dave.
Oh, no, I know, no, I, I know, I know.
Um, did you have other questions for us? I had one that you had asked about whether there was a minimum that maybe we should talk about briefly.
Sure, right, yeah.
Uh, so we, we did discuss this, I think it was just last year, not the year before, last year.
Yes.
Where we, we looked into the possibility of exempting a, a certain amount, where some of these personal property tax bills are literally more cost and administrative.
Right.
Than, than we, we garner in revenue from them, so they don't make sense. And we were told by VLCT, and I talked to Marsha and Howard at Rutland Town, and they were given the same advice, that the only way to do that, you'd take that, if you say exempted everything below two thousand dollars, you'd have to remove two thousand dollars from everybody, so you'd just be giving up a certain amount of the grand list and wouldn't be getting much further.
Okay, okay.
And the other point of not pursuing that was that we really needed, um, a thorough look at it, like, like Gail's doing, to even know what that bottom level is, you know, if that's being reported.
Okay.
So, um, so we could, we can certainly revisit that down the road, but right now there, there is no minimum there. There really isn't a way to do that and keep the town in the clear legally.
Without shooting themselves in the foot.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we know when the last update on the personal?
Have we ever done this before, this in-person?
To my knowledge, Pittsburgh hasn't.
It's always been by paper.
Before any collective memory exists.
By paper and kind of the honor system.
And the listers perhaps following up on it, depending on, you know, what they, they knew about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's not like a real estate town-wide reappraisal that's mandated by the state, that the state's kind of hands-off, well, if you look at your four-eleven, they don't get any money for this, for the state, so it's.
They don't care.
Restriction or whatever.
Yeah, they don't care about that.
Well, no, and I think that's important for people to know, that this all goes in to our general fund and none of it goes to the school, it's, or the state, it's, stays to lower everybody's tax bills, so. And there's, and there's two or three players that pay a lot of money.
Yes.
A lot of money.
And if that went away, our taxes are gonna.
Gonna go.
Go way off.
Yeah, everybody's.
To be equitable with them, if they're paying based on their personal property.
Everybody else has to.
Small and medium-sized businesses have to as well.
Yep.
And we've had so many new businesses in the last twenty, twenty-five years even, that maybe they were never, have never paid before, so they don't know the process.
Right.
Whereas we're working here, we know about it and we're on it and know.
But it should be clear that the select board did not enact a new tax.
No, I know, not at all. The tails just got larger and larger.
This is when Hank Pelkey would say that, oh, yeah, we get a commission.
Well, we get ten percent, yeah.
Well, yeah, that was one of the questions I got and we'll end this here, 'cause we gotta go, there's a lot of people gonna be waiting. But, uh, one of the questions I got, they thought the tax was ten percent on whatever, so if they had fifty thousand dollars worth of property, a personal property, their tax was gonna be five thousand dollars. Because they read that, 'cause Reg gave me his form and at the bottom, it's ten percent of the depreciated. In other words, if you bought a machine for ten thousand dollars, it was fully depreciated, you would be paying on a thousand dollars, ten percent of the initial value you paid for it, correct?
You'd be, that would be your grand list value.
Right, 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 well, no, your grand list, but you'd be paying tax on a, on a thousand dollars.
Well, you're, yeah, well, then it's divided by a hundred and then multiplied by the tax rate.
Right, right. But I think I hear what you're saying, 'cause they aren't allowed to depreciate it down to the floor of ten percent residual.
Right, yes, but, no, that, that's what I'm saying, but what they took that as was it was a ten percent tax on the value of it, period.
Oh, yeah.
They evidently read it quick and I was like, no, that's not, so, you know.
It's confusing, I, I will, in their defense, it's confusing, I mean, please, we're, we're happy to try to explain it to them. And I think Gail is better at educating on this than, than I. Well, I will do my best as well.
It's a great learning experience for the next time we do this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, yep.
Okay, introduction of Pittsburgh new town manager and update on the transition.
Well, you've all met now, Brenda Fox Howard, and she began work here on the transition with me on Monday. And we have another week and a half together, uh, before I leave on the twenty-ninth of April. So Brenda has been reviewing all the memos that you've got, which is my effort to kind of summarize where things stand with the town and various things. And, um, she's also been introduced to a number of staff members already, and tomorrow you'll meet more at the staff.
And, um, she's also been introduced to a number of staff members already and tomorrow you'll meet more at the staff meeting. Next week will be lots more introductions, everybody from the school librarian to, um, Almia folks, to, um, the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, trying to get her acquainted with, you know, the people in Pittsburgh, uh, and the ones that she'll be dealing with going forward. So, um, welcome to Pittsburgh and congratulations.
Thank you.
And everyone's looking forward to working with you.
I'm very excited to be here. I really am. Uh, my husband and I, uh, lived in Vermont, uh, a while back. Um, and to, due to family illness, we had to leave and tried to get back, but then things didn't line up and now this did. So we're very excited. Um, this is, uh, where we wanted to really plant our roots for the rest of our days. Um, so, excuse me, I'm looking forward to the opportunity to serve you. Um, and hopefully, um, anyone that has any questions or concerns, I hope you'll feel the same uh, to come forward and ask me or speak to me. My door is open, just, uh, the same as John has been. Um, we have similar way of thinking, pretty similar. So, um, I, I hope everyone will feel comfortable just reaching out to me if they feel like they have a concern or, uh, just want to say hi.
Welcome.
Yes.
Welcome, Brenda.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to working with you.
Okay, update on efforts to recruit and appoint a resident for select board and water and sewer.
Yes, as you know, Hank Pelkey has recently stepped down from his duties on both boards. And we've advertised, uh, that his, uh, vacancy is open for applicants. Uh, there's a May fourth deadline. We'd like anybody interested in serving as a select person to contact the town manager, me or Brenda, before the fourth. And at the fourth, the town manager will present you with a list of applicants and you can discuss maybe how you'd like to go on to make an appointment, maybe calling them in for interviews. That's up to you folks. Uh, and then similarly, we've put a May sixth deadline for any applicants interested in serving on the town's water and sewer commission. We'll be happy to take anybody who, uh, wants to contribute and be helpful. But even better if you are a water and or sewer customer. So you've got some skin in the game. When you think about rates, you'll be feeling the same pain as everyone else.
Yeah, makes sense.
Update on VLCT guidance, resources on diversity, equity and inclusion efforts.
Yes, uh, from time to time I hear from the chair, Alicia, as to what our timetable is to move forward with efforts on diversity, equity and inclusion. As you know, the select board has already adopted a declaration of inclusion. And, um, there have been some members of the community that want us to take it one step further and talk about how to implement those noble concepts. We've been waiting for guidance from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And in your packet, you'll see an email from the executive director of VLCT who believes that in sometime in May, they will have some guidance and best management practices that we might want to adopt in that regard. He also points out that there is grant money available to towns who would like to, um, do more implementation of this kind of policy. Um, and it can be used to help with training or to hire a consultant to work with the town to make for a more inclusive, uh, culture in the town government. So those are all things that when they unroll in, uh, May and beyond, you can have further discussions about.
We'll, we'll call you.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I would say we just, we table that until we get the guidance we need.
Right.
Everybody agree? Okay, uh, is H. Simons, is she?
I don't know if Heather is here. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
No.
I guess not. Um, we had set it up with her and maybe she's had a conflict, so we can follow up.
No, we'll, we'll just hang on to that one.
Yep.
Uh, consider waiving zoning fees for wastewater facility structure construction.
Yeah, just like at this transfer station where the highway crew built kind of a storage shed. We've had some extra materials and the folks at the water and sewer department thought they'd like to build something similar for storage of some of their outdoor equipment. And, um, normally the town charges, it charges itself zoning fees. And, uh, those can be waived however, so that we don't have to write ourselves a check. So if you were agreeable, we could tell Jeff Biasuzzi to, that we, that we're not going to pay him his fee.
I make a motion we waive it.
Anybody want to second it?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
We don't usually charge ourselves.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Yeah, no, it doesn't make much sense to charge ourselves.
Take it out of his pocket.
Hey, well, exactly. I realize Jeff won't get his commission.
He'll be all right.
I mean, we're trying to minimize the paperwork.
We just, we just saved probably three trees.
Yeah.
I mean, when we did the zoning update in two thousand nineteen, I suggested we put that in as an exemption.
It should be, yeah.
But it got oversight and then, and so we'll try to get it the next time.
Okay, consider making new appointments of town representative to RRPC's Transportation Advisory Council.
Yeah, the Transportation Advisory Council or the TAC is the regional board that discusses regional transportation issues and how they affect municipalities like ours. And I have long served as the town's representative to that board. And, uh, Alicia has recently been my alternate. And, um, given the select board's understandable desire not to overburden the new town manager and expect her to step into that board, uh, Alicia has agreed to step up to become the full member. And Chad Ujera has agreed to serve as alternate on that board if you folks were agreeable.
We were going to appoint her anyways. Although she's here and not wanting to do it. That's a good time to do it when she's not here.
No, we're not going to do that.
Yeah, but she wants it.
No, she does. Yeah, she likes it.
Brenda's learning some great lessons. But no, she said that down the road, maybe in a month or two or three, she would be willing.
Well, no, and I think that's the thing to give you some time to get settled in.
Yep.
Rather than just throwing you to the wolves immediately. We'll give you a few days to adapt to the wolves.
Couple of days, that's good.
Yeah. So, uh, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion we appoint, uh.
Alicia and Chad.
Alicia and Chad.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, discuss annual update of local emergency management plan and related documents.
Yes, um, tonight, we'll get to it on the next item. There's a public works mutual aid agreement, which we can renew participation in. But the rest of the documents involving local emergency management planning will be presented by, um, Brenda and Jason at the May fourth meeting. Jason and we had a good talk the other day. We've updated some of the information and that should be ready for your review in two weeks.
Yep. Okay, so we'll just table that and work tonight. Okay. Oh, and you, did you want to table the mutual aid or do we want to do that tonight?
We can do that.
Okay, so renewal of, uh, public works mutual aid agreement.
As you know, it's just kind of an agreement between member towns that if we have a crisis, we can call on you and pay you an agreed rental or payment for assistance in a crisis. Similarly, if, uh, if someone else is having a crisis, we can offer help at a certain rate. And it's been negotiated among all the member towns. And so it's just a matter of getting a renewal of the, of the document.
I make a motion renew it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, I will send it, I will give it to you after tonight's meeting, uh, for signature on that. Or since I have your approval, I can sign on.
Okay, yep.
Good.
Uh, review the letter from Rutland Town Re-Emergency Dispatch Services.
Uh, yes, Rutland Town has resp, has apparently communicated to all the towns in the region, including Pittsburgh, saying they have set up a working group consisting of lots of different town elements. And that they'd like, uh, to be able to count on, uh, the towns in the region to support the effort. Um, I did touch base briefly with the Regional Planning Commission to see, you know, if they thought they could be of any help to that group. They said they'd like to know more from the state about their plans, which they believe are not yet final as to what their plans are on dispatch. So, uh, that's the latest update I get from the Regional Planning Commission.
The plan was to kick us off.
But I mean, but if you, if you would like, um, I can certainly send a letter to the Rutland Town folks saying Pittsburgh supports your efforts to put together a working group.
Yeah, I, I mean, and I still, I brought this up before. I mean, if we're building our firehouse over here in Florence and there's a chance of incorporating this into that same building, I think it's at least worth looking into.
Have any of you attended that working group session?
I have, yeah.
Do you know whether, do you know, um, whether they've gotten good input from a variety of towns in that effort?
I think so. And they presently want to go to a place that's already existing if they can. So if this happens, I don't think we'd have enough time to, to put something in a, you know, a new building.
Okay, okay. But we'll send them a letter saying thank you for your letter.
Oh, yeah.
We're happy to, to support the effort.
I know the state police want us out of there as soon as they can get rid of us.
Okay.
The, you know, the EMS, fire, all that stuff. They, they don't want to dispatch anybody but themselves. And they're going to set aside maybe up to eleven million.
Right.
I think it is.
Right.
To start with this.
For various.
There's grants, very, and it's very dangerous. Yeah. And Rutland is the largest stakeholder in this whole thing. So. That's why they want to get rid of us first.
So we'll send them a, we'll send them a supportive letter.
Either like what Rutland has over in that new station?
Uh, they would prob, they'll do something so it's all, yeah.
And so you could still reach out.
Oh, yeah.
Radios.
Yep. They'll, they'll make sure coverage is better than what it is now.
My business radio, my record reaches much farther than this.
Oh, yeah. Our, our communications are terrible.
Okay, uh, so that, uh, we still don't have the person on from the police academy.
No, apparently not.
All right, we will adjourn the select board.
We're going to recess.
Recess the select board, sorry, and open the liquor board.
Open the liquor board.
Okay. Um, as I had mentioned, first you might want to consider approving the minutes from the last liquor board meeting. If they're agreeable, we'll send them down for signature. And they've.
Somebody get to see them.
The second thing is that for the first time, we've heard from the new Dollar General store that they would like to have a second class liquor, um, license, uh, permit, uh, from the state. But of course, that's premise to some degree on town support. Uh, I did reach out to the folks at Dollar General and I said, hey, this is somewhat unusual. It's a first time application. Would you like to come and speak to the select board? Let us know who you are and what your plans are. They said they would try to find someone. Obviously they haven't, that I've seen.
They should try a little harder.
Would you like me to ask them to come in and we can table this matter until they do send someone?
I make a motion we table it until we see somebody from there.
I can understand it. It's a first time application. They're strangers to us.
They at least should have a representative here to say what they're going to do and how they're going to do it.
So, okay, yep. So now we can have discussion. Yeah. I mean, yeah, I, it would be nice to have a face to put with the business.
Yeah.
I mean, most of the rest of businesses in town, we have some idea.
There's a relationship, yeah.
Yeah. So I'm not against that.
Okay.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, the permit, uh.
This is for liquor though.
They've, they've clicked the box for second class liquor.
Second class.
But, um, we'll have to get them to tell us about whether they have any tobacco plans.
I think they do. Don't they down there? Do they have tobacco?
She said that they were smart enough not to put anything for sale until they've heard that this is going through.
Okay.
Down there.
I said, that's a good step.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
I gotta get a license first.
Yeah, you need a license.
Okay, uh, Maple Fields?
Um, if you want, we could discuss that. Um, I hadn't intended to.
Oh, okay.
But I did have that information in your packet that we learned from the state that there's been, uh, some law enforcement activity with regard to that facility.
And I think we should table that one till we find out.
Yeah, we, I think we've already agreed, or you've already agreed that you wouldn't take action.
We're going to withhold.
You want to wait till the state approaches you and find out why you haven't taken action and you can explain it to them.
Okay. Well, but this Maple Fields is diff, this is, was Maple Fields, wasn't it? Wasn't?
Champlain.
Champlain.
Oh, my mistake. I was confusing the two in my mind. Okay.
No, Champlain is the one we've been, for quite a while. Maple Fields is the mobile.
I see.
That's the mobile.
And that's already been approved, I believe, in the liquor board for renewal.
I thought, I don't, it's in here, but I thought there was a, I thought there was a liquor license for Maple Fields. And then there was a letter with it about the police deal.
Uh, we'll probably have to discuss it because I'm confused now. I thought that.
I thought Maple Fields has already been.
Yes.
We did Maple Fields before.
We've approved it. What I put in the packet was simply a notice from the state that there was enforcement.
There was a violation. Okay, all right. And I was confused. I apologize.
No problem.
Okay, uh, so that's it for the liquor board?
Yes.
So we will recess the liquor board or adjourn, yeah, yeah. I'm just giving you ammo because I know you like to throw bullets. So anyway, we will adjourn the, adjourn the liquor board. And that, I believe, is it for our open meeting.